And once again, I want to thank everyone for their support of me personally and as well as Team Laurel. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you. I too would like to thank all the voters that supported Team Laurel. I'd like to thank my family. I'd like to thank my family and I would just like to congratulate the mayor and team for all of our winnings. I'd also like to thank the 4th of July Committee for the great fundraisers that they put on and the most recent one at Sullivan's last Friday. It was karaoke night and we really had a good time. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the 31st of October, we had a very successful trick-or-treat night. And I'm advised by my daughter, my grandson, and my wife that at last count, we had a record number of trick-or-treaters, 186. A special thanks to the men and women of the Laurel Police Department for keeping all of the trick-or-treaters safe and sound. On the 1st of November, I had the pleasure of meeting with Maryland DER Secretary Ben Grumbles along with David Craig, who is the Secretary for Planning, to discuss the Patuxent River Commission's suggestion for the notification process for wastewater plant spills along the Patuxent River with the goal of increasing notification and safety to the public who use the river. Secretary Grumbles took our suggestions under advisement and he thinks that we've made some good suggestions to ensure the safety of our citizens that work and play along the Patuxent River. On the 3rd, of course, we had Election Day. Thanks to my wife, Mary Aleene, to my daughters Katie, who was at the other polling place, the daughter Katie, the voters, and a special thanks to all the election workers for the long hours spent in making it a very successful day. On the 4th through the 7th, got on airplane early the next morning, I went to the National Eagle Cities Meeting in Nashville, Tennessee. Had the pleasure of listening for some words of wisdom from our Vice President Biden. More importantly, I spent a substantial amount of time in dialogue with Transportation, Infrastructure and Services Steering Committee. And hopefully, we're going to have a transportation bill that will benefit municipalities for the next six years. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Grier?
Thank you, Mr. President. Along with the record number of trick-or-treaters, the weather was absolutely perfect that night as far as walking up and down Main Street. And the businesses all benefited from that. I'd like to send get well wishes out to Jean Wilson. And I'd like to thank all the voters that turned out too. Hope they bring extra friends next time. Also, I appreciate, we may be two wards, but I'd like to thank all the city voters that came out and supported us in one way or the other. And I'd like to thank all the department heads and city staff that supported us because you always make us look good and I appreciate that. I'd like to thank the supporters here today, especially just Jean. In my office, it always supports me. We don't make too much money during the election season, but we have a good time. And I'd like to thank Fred's wife, Jo, too, for your support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Grier. I too would like to echo my teammates up here on the dais for all their support over the past year. We've worked really hard. I think that voters came out and they appreciated what we have done. I think that the turnout was probably as good as it could be under the circumstances. I'd like to always see more, as you know. And we fight very hard to get that turnout to be out there so that everybody gets a word to say about how the city is run. So with that being said, again, I want to thank all the hard people, all the workers, the hard work that they all did for us. And I want to thank my teammates up here for all their strength and willingness to serve. And with that being said, Mayor Mo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple comments, speedy recovery to all those that are a little bit under the weather. I know we have several, as well as Jean Wilson. So speedy recovery to all of them and her as well. Trick-or-treat on Main Street, we know was on the 29th. I want to thank the Laurel Board of Trade for their hard work in putting that event on, that annual event on. We had many, many kids. We had many families. I think it's a wonderful event. Want to thank our police department, our city staff, our public works, as well as code enforcement, and more importantly, all of our volunteer cert members and alumni that were there to help. This event has grown, continues to grow. As I said, we'll have to have a discussion with the Laurel Board of Trade on how we can make it safer. And that's will be our first order of business. So we'll be looking forward to working with you all. But again, thank you to the Board of Trade and all of our staff that were out and citizens participated. You did hear of the City of Laurel elections. Let me just be brief and say thank you to all those that came out and supported me for my reelection, as well as the members of the team. I think this is, all of those at the dais, I was glad to see returned. I think they've worked hard and I look forward to the next two years of working with them after they're sworn in. I did go down Friday to the Clerk of the Circuit Court, which I'm required to, and got sworn in by the Clerk of the Circuit Court for Prince George's County. So that has been taken care of. I'm good for four. And the Harvest Moon Hay Ride, I didn't get down there. I want to thank, how was the turnout?
220.
220. It was a little drizzly, a little warm. That's right, warm. But everybody has a good time. And I want to thank our parking wrecks department for continuing to put that on. But for everybody that came out at 75-degree weather for the bonfire. So it should have been a good time. But thank you, Joanne. A couple of announcements. The Coffee with Councilmember Mary Lehman will be held on November the 13th at More Than Java Cafe, 358 Main Street, from 8:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Is that right? PM?
8:00.
8:00 AM, 10:00 AM. We'll correct that. I'd hate for people to show up at 10:00 PM down. I'd be in trouble. 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, to 10:00 AM, excuse me. Let me remind everyone, the hospital is still an issue. Laurel and the surrounding jurisdictions, as well as the Northern End of Prince George County residents, need to continue to keep the pressure on. I encourage you to write letters to the Healthcare Commission, to our county executive, to the governor. We are continuing to do a lot of things behind the scene, a lot of different meetings. Some have been very productive and others have been an eye-opening experience, to say the least. But I am convinced that the things that are occurring there, not all of them are Laurel's fault. We have a lot of doctors that continue to do not support or go to Laurel Regional Hospital because of the Dimensions Healthcare. As I have said publicly, Dimensions Healthcare, they have a track record of failure and it's time for them to move forward, move on, and allow somebody else to take over the hospital. And we're going to continue those efforts, but it requires all of us to speak with one voice and work together. And I encourage you to continue to do that. Fawn Mill Elementary School will have a craft fair on November the 21st from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM. And city offices will be closed on Veterans Day, which is the 11th, Wednesday, the 11th. Trash recycling, check the schedule, will not be performed that day. It'll be the next day, Thursday, if you get picked up on Wednesday. You know, usually I make some statements right after the election. I'm going to hold that until next meeting. I try to let the public know and the council know for the next four years where I'm going to concentrate my efforts and where I think, set up some goals and put that out to the community. So I'm going to wait and we'll read those into the record at our next meeting. I do want to report that I did send, on November the 6th, I did send a letter to H. Edgeworth Works, President of City Council, and Laurel City Council members regarding my veto statement on ordinance number 1848. On Wednesday, October the 28th, 2015, the Laurel City Council meeting in regular session adopted ordinance number 1848, an ordinance to approve the revitalization overlay area number one, conceptual plan for the Laurel Shopping Center development with conditions. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the detailed deliberations given by the applicant to the city council, the planning commission, and city staff. Also want to acknowledge the spirit of cooperation demonstrated by the applicant, Federal Realty, and its submission team. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of Federal Realty to improve the long overdue appearance of the Laurel Shopping Center with fresh paint, lighting, landscaping, and improvements to the dumpsters and closures, to name a few. Secondly, I want Federal Realty to know that I appreciate their business in the City of Laurel. The Laurel Shopping Center is one of the earliest of Laurel's commercial developments. It has always been and will continue to be a key component of the city's commercial structure that exists today. That support, that support needs, needs the citizens in the City of the greater, that meets the needs of the citizens, both in the city and the greater Laurel area. I do not believe that the city is in a position to move 52,000 square feet of commercial zoning. It is important for the city's zoning structure that this property remain part of Laurel's commercial zones. Therefore, after due consideration and authorization under Section 354, veto the City of Laurel Charter, I do hereby veto ordinance number 1848 for the following reasons. C Street Flats Apartments, 142 dwellings, was completed in September 2015. Laurel Gardens, 114 residents. At the Laurel Town Center, there'll be more resident, there'll be other residential units, as well as Mill Creek, Avalon Bay, and Spring Arbor, that are under construction for a total of 1351 multifamily dwellings. The Mark Train Station Apartments will come into play, which has been approved by City Ordinance 1763, and Hawthorne Place, which is 1006, City Ordinance Number 1853, redevelopment overlay totaling 1316 multifamily dwellings that have been approved by the Mayor City Council. The overall apartment units that have been recently completed, under construction or approved for construction, is 2,809 dwellings. Other reasons are the lack of adequate public, adequate parking now and in the future in that area. The city center designation has ample multifamily rental units already approved. The loss of the commercial space and adding multifamily units is not harmonious with the surrounding communities. The Laurel Shopping Center has been since 1964 and continues to be a primary retail commercial center in the City of Laurel. There are more than adequate existing, under construction and approved for construction, multifamily dwelling units within the City of Laurel. There is a limited available retail commercial property that would be reduced by 52,000 square feet if this project was allowed to move forward. Federal Realty has an ample opportunity to enhance Laurel Shopping Center within the opportunities within the footprint of its proposed apartment site. With vision, Federal Realty can develop a commercial product onsite that will work well with the neighboring residential uses and transition well with the existing more intense uses within the center. I can assure you that my office and city staff will work closely with Federal Realty to make the most of its opportunities, signed by me as the mayor. I have a couple. Whereas the City of Laurel celebrates local small businesses and the contributions they make, they make to our local economy and community. And whereas it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas the City of Laurel supports our local businesses because they create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocate groups, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore I pray and mo the Mayor of City of Laurel to whoever I proclaim Saturday, November the 28th, 2015, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Laurel. I urge all Laurel residents to celebrate in the spirit of the small business and support our small businesses in the City of Laurel. And it's signed by me as the mayor. And Marvin Rogers is the President of the Laurel Board of Trade and I ask Marvin to come up and I'll say a few words. Let me also, and Luann's got some others on there before you leave, we want to shop Laurel, don't forget.
Thank you, Mayor Mo. It's a great privilege to receive this on behalf of all of our small businesses in the Laurel area. It's important to note that our free enterprise system is built around the small business. And it's important to maintain an environment that allows small business to grow and prosper. And I'd like to thank Mayor Mo and everyone up here for all the work that you've done to help the small businesses in the Laurel area. So thank you very much.
Said to Marvin, thank you again. Thank you for all the work that Laurel Board of Trade does. They do many different special events. We really appreciate that. I have Second Proclamation 2015-20, whereas the City of Laurel Mall was incorporated in 1870, and whereas Maryland is home to 156 other municipalities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive form of government, with citizens being able to directly access their elected officials. And whereas municipal government has fostered a strong foundation for government service in cooperation with the county, state, and federal levels of government. And whereas municipalities have also enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by maintaining natural and historical sites and structures, helping to make the City of Laurel Mall a great place to live, work, and explore. Therefore, I pray and mo the Mayor of City of Laurel do hereby proclaim November 2015 as Municipal Government Works Month in the City of Laurel and join the Maryland Municipal League in celebrating a successful government all over the great state of Maryland. And I'm going to ask Luann Crook if she'll come up. Luann's President of the Clerks Association. She's also a member of the Board of Directors. And Kim Rao, Kim does all of our, Kim's a clerk. I'll ask both of them to come up. Kim does the program here in the city. With that said, I better make sure I acknowledge Donna Prairie is a member of the Maryland Municipal League Board of Directors. So you can come up if you'd like to and say a few words. Budget time's coming. I know where I'm at. Whoa, 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 y'all tell about municipal government. That's why all three of y'all up here.
Lou and I are on the board this year together. And it's wonderful working with her and Kim is always wonderful to work with. It's not going to help the mayor one bit as far as the budget's concerned. All of us will work together on that. And responsible government is a lot of work and it's a lot of moving parts. And all of these people will be working on it together too. And we're lucky. We've got 157 municipalities that'll also give us lots of knowledge, help us move forward on that. Thank you.
For those of you that came into City Hall tonight, you'll notice the Municipal Government Works flag is flying. And it will be flying here at the municipal center the whole month of November. And we encourage you to check out our website to learn as much as you can about municipal government, the closest government to you, the people. Thank you.
And as President of the Maryland Municipal Clerks Association, I'd like to thank our clerk, Kim Rao, for all the hard work that she does, keeping our city council on track and on schedule and all the agendas and the great election she ran and everything else she does. So thank you, Kim. Wouldn't do without you.
You work for me.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hearing, and I have one person that's signed up to speak. Is it Ms. Hughes? Come forward, please.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening, city councilmen and residents. I just came to represent St. Mark's United Methodist Church. And you all gave us a proclamation last month on our 125th anniversary. And I just wanted to come to represent the church again and to represent our pastor, Reverend King, Sonia King, doctor, sorry, Reverend Dr. Sonia King, to say thank you very much. We look forward to working with the city council and the Laurel Police Department in keeping not only St. Mark's, but also the Grove Community a pillar for the City of Laurel. So thank you very much.
Did you all have your flea market?
We did. We had our flea market, yeah, we had our flea market on Saturday and we continued it on Sunday as well. You missed out, you missed out on some good food. But we will keep you posted.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the general public hearing? Oh, yes. Good evening, Judge Nichols, and welcome to our chambers. And Mr. Delicate Fresh, welcome as well. Nice to have you all with us this evening. Okay, with that being said, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:25. Is there anything else to come before this council? Seeing none, I'll turn, sign and die.
Come back in session in five minutes.
Five minutes. Five minutes. I call to order the first meeting of the mayor and city council. This is Monday, November the 9th, sitting in regular time, and I ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Ricks?
Here.
Mayor Mo?
Last, everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask Mayor Mo to take over.
Okay, we'll start with the oath of office, and we'll ask Councilman Les if he'd come forward. Want to go over some? See what you want to do right there? I gotta use the mic, so. And Kim put this in a six-point font, so I can use my glasses. Mike, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, stating your name where I state mine. I, Craig Mo, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the constitutional laws thereof, and that I will support the charter and laws of Prince George's County, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of city council with the city of Laurel and Prince George's County to the, according to the constitutional laws of this state and the charter of this city. Congratulations. If you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me, stating your name where I state mine. I, Craig Mo, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the constitution and laws thereof, and that I will support the charter and laws of Prince George's County, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of city council with the city of Laurel and Prince George's County according to the constitution and laws of this state and the charter of this city. Congratulations. Kim, you need copies of these? I'm going to give them all to Kim, and then she'll give them back to you. Next, H. Edward Ricks.
You steal this from who?
No, it's mine. It was given to me. And if you'll raise your right hand and repeat your name after I repeat mine. I, H., I, Craig A. Mo, do solemnly swear. Sorry. That I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the constitutional laws thereof, and that I will support the charter and laws of Prince George's County, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of city council with the city of Laurel, Prince George's County according to the constitution and laws of this state and the charter of this city. Congratulations. Donna L. Crary. Donna, if you'll state your name, raise your right hands, if you'll state your name where I state mine. I, Craig A. Mo, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the constitutional laws thereof, and that I will support the charter and laws of Prince George's County, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of city council with the city of Laurel, Prince George's County according to the constitution and laws of this state and the charter of this city. Congratulations. Okay, we're all done, right? Frederick Smalls and family. Fred, if you'll raise your right hand and state your name where I state mine. I, Craig Mo, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the constitution and laws thereof, and that I will support the charter and laws of Prince George's County, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of city council with the city of Laurel, Prince George's County according to the constitution and the laws of this state and the charter of this city. Congratulations. President, that concludes my duties. Congratulations to all of y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I will ask for the report of the mayor and city council, Mr. Smalls.
I have no report.
Ms. Nicholas. Mr. Les.
No report.
Ms. Crary.
Happy day.
I have none. Mayor Mo.
I just want to congratulate again the council, want to thank our judges, election judges, and want to thank our current council president for his leadership the past year, and look forward to working with you and the other council members in the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll ask, excuse me, I will open the general public hearing at 7:46. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:46 and a half. At this time, I'll return the gavel to the clerk. Madam Clerk?
At this time, the floor is open for nominations for the office of council president.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
I nominate H. Edward Ricks for council president.
Second? I'm going to call the roll.
Closed.
Nominations are closed. We have a nomination for H. Edward Ricks as council president, nomination made by Mr. Les, seconded by Ms. Crary. I'm going to call the roll now. Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Absent. Because I don't want to vote for myself. Very glancy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the support from the council. We've worked very hard, as I said earlier, on a number of projects, and I know the mayor's got a lot of things on his mind that we're going to accomplish, or attempt to accomplish in the coming session. And with that, I'd like to nominate for pro tem this year, Mr. Michael Les. Mike, do you accept?
Accept.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting at 7:48. Thank you all.